Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Community Hall Meeting. Today is Monday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's five o'clock. We have a special meeting today. Thank you to all our veterans. Hopefully, you had a nice weekend celebrating Veterans Day. Um, this is a listening session, maybe. You'll have some opportunities to give some input, ask some questions, uh, almost like a workshop, but a little less, uh, uh, informal because we're gonna have a presentation. And this will be with regard to our future land use map. And for our presentation, we welcome our community development director, Mr. Mark Hunt, and our senior city planner, Mr. Taylor Beswick. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thanks for putting together a slide deck. And your reference before tonight, you have the floor.
Uh, thanks, Your Honor. Uh, I also just want to take a minute to thank council for coming together for an extra night out of your week. Uh, I really appreciate that. And, uh, we've worked really hard to bring you some information that I think is gonna be, one, informative, also lead to some really good discussion, uh, be thought provoking, and also, uh, to a product that I'm, I think we're all gonna be very proud of. And then secondly, just, uh, the department heads that have been supporting us and their staff in this effort, especially Chris Curran on some of the legal aspects of this, of this product. And then I can't thank Taylor and Greg enough for the work they're doing, putting this plan together with our consultant, RDG. So I'm just really happy with the effort. Um, I just want to give you a reminder before Taylor gets into the presentation, um, of how much we have done and how much has happened kind of in the background. And that might feel a little bit different than the last time you were doing this because this is a planned update. So we're not throwing away the old plan. We're keeping everything you decided before and just updating it. Um, so we're not, we're not rewriting whole text chapters or anything like that. We're just looking for the data and the pieces that need to be updated and updating those. And really, when you do that, when you do a comprehensive plan update, maps are the key. Maps drive the data and maps drive the text. So when the, when the map changes, then your text and data will have to change to reflect that. Now, our goals and overall strategies for how we want the city to, to grow really aren't changing. Those were, those were locked in. That vision was locked in last time. So you're not getting that same, maybe, that same input because we're, we're keeping it. It was already done. Um, so really, maps are the key. And I, and I think tonight, you're gonna pay a lot of attention to maps. And those maps are then gonna drive the text that you're gonna see in the very near future. Um, so with that kind of primer, that update, I would like to ask Taylor to kind of start the presentation. There's gonna be some natural pauses for discussion. Uh, the mayor will, will lead that discussion, uh, I'm sure. But, uh, we'll also kind of just kind of, you know, look to you for the normal nodding that you're getting it, or hey, you missed something. We're not following. And I do off, I do ask that, um, any of the other department heads, especially, uh, Brian and Brent Morlock and Chris, jump in on your areas of expertise. Um, we certainly don't pretend to know it all as planners. We were not smart enough to be attorneys or engineers, so we became planners. Um, so that's why we're here today. Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mark. Um, so staff has, uh, prepared, um, a few items that update you and refresh you on our comprehensive plan update, um, touch on the annexation map and a few annexation growth areas in the city, uh, to our north and to our east. Start with the comprehensive plan update. It's an overview and the status of that project. As a refresher, why are we updating this plan? Mark kind of touched on this, but there's been many changes to the city and the world. Um, there's new census data. We have, our downtown's evolving. Uh, we have new development focus areas, uh, middle and I-80s especially. Uh, transportation and land use integration is a big key in that part, updating our, our environmental priorities. So there's a number of topics that require an update, not a rewrite, but an update for that comprehensive plan. Also, refresher of that process, we start with the comp plan update and that future land use update. That can then, once that's adopted, we can start focusing in on that zoning ordinance update. And that, of course, then affects how subdivisions happen, development, and then later on, construction. This has been the project schedule for the comp plan update. So way back in January, we had a, we kicked it off. Uh, staff and community development department, department heads, uh, with RDG's staff had the planning kickoff. We had our first meeting. Um, throughout the winter of beginning of this year, we had staff meetings, shared information, identified priorities where we wanted to update the plan. We had data collection occurring also concurrently at that time. In May, we had the big kickoff of our website and our survey, our public survey, which was that website where you could put a pinpoint on the map and tell us how you think, what should happen in the city of Bettendorf in the future. So we had a lot of, uh, people partake in that. It's still available, so you can still get on there. Um, we've had group input meetings. Our, we've been calling them ambassador meetings. Uh, I think the Rotary Club. We've gone to the developers, had meetings with them, other smaller groups, uh, civic organization.
Just pause a second.
Sure. Um, and then we've had, we've met with you, um, council, uh, through a joint session we had back in July. We had the Plan Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment, City Council, uh, kind of went through an overview, got some input in big room. Uh, then we've had some updates. I think back in September was our most recent one. And then tonight's another one, so some example of those meetings. Uh, the draft and the adoption, that was really started in July, just getting that draft, started to get the bones of the draft together. Um, we are currently feverishly working on the draft to get a first full draft, um, for that open house, uh, that community open house next Monday from six to eight at the waterfront convention center. Um, so those are all going on right now, and we hope to have that, a final draft adopted. Um, after review and input, this full draft will get input from everyone, including, and then approval by the city council, um, by February or beginning of next year. Um, in the background, we're concurrently working on the zoning code, and we really started getting the bones of that together in July. So there had, RDG has been reorganizing our code, uh, identifying areas where we need direction, to give them direction. Um, and we need to get input on that, but we'll really start getting that input after we get the comp plan adopted. And that would be the zoning input, and then we'll have a draft of that zoning code and adoption sometime next year.
One thing that this project schedule doesn't show is the alignment with other projects, which we push the pause button on occasion so that we could finish or enhance other planning projects within the city with the data that we were collecting and the, and the information we were gathering for this plan. So for example, uh, we have a parks plan processes going on. The value you're getting from this planning process is being delivered to the parks plan. So that one dollar gets spent two ways. I think that's pretty impressive. Um, and also the downtown master plan. We spent a lot of time getting the downtown master plan, you know, in order with Mr. Ryder and getting it ready so that when this comp plan is done, they, those two just mirror each other. They match. So we don't have dissonance across our plan, other plans from the city. And that's really, really important when you have a tough development project and people are, are questioning it, and they're looking at your park plan or looking at your downtown master plan, uh, what have you. And, and they're trying to say, how does this all align? It doesn't seem like there's alignment, and they're questioning a certain development. Uh, we went through that. That's not a very good feeling to have. So I think we've done a good job of trying to avoid that going forward.
So to, some key points about what's actually in that plan. We have the future land use map, of course, and we've, um, met with you on that. But what's in the text of the plan? What's in some of the, the goals? What's changing? What's not changing? So start off, what is not changing? The goals, uh, the vision, um, as Mark mentioned earlier, those are staying the same. We surveyed council early on, on, early on in the process, and really the same goals and vision statement were, they didn't want to change. So we kept that as, as is. Um, the concepts of DCAs are still, um, that's our development character areas as a zoning tool, um, are still there, and they will be in our zoning code as, as we see right now, from our perspective right now. And then the whole, the plan as a whole, it's a text rewrite, but not the same, the bones are still there. The same content's still there, just updated where, you know, new data is, uh, prevalent, um, maybe reorganizing a little bit, but as a whole, it's still the same structure, um, for the update. What is changing? Future land use map, as I mentioned, we have, um, updated areas. We kind of did a really intensive, um, analysis, seeing if it's accurate for our developed areas. And then we checked with, had multiple iterations for our undeveloped areas, see if that's our future, where we want development to occur and how it occurs. Our sub areas, so those are some areas of town where they've, um, the consultant RDG focused on areas like Magnolia, Hawthorne area. Um, our downtown was, um, middle I-80 area. So those are some areas that, um, are looked at with a little more focus. Demographic data was updated. Growth projections, we're, uh, projecting by two thousand and forty-five roughly fifty-seven thousand, uh, people in the city of Bettendorf, and that is based off that data analysis and new data that we got from census data and other, um, sources. And then some text, uh, updates as needed. And on the screen is some excerpts from that draft plan. So the housing chapter, for instance, there's a lot of changes and updates and just data there, a lot of, lots of change in the real estate, um, especially in housing affordability, from two thousand and ten data to present day, as we're all aware. Um, so there's a lot of info there, um, and it helps, um, validate the goals and the vision for the plan. Our draft future land use map, this is the same one shared, uh, with the, with city council last month. Um, I do want to touch on a couple of updates. Um, they might seem small, uh, but it's actually just renaming some of those land use categories. We had an issue where we had the same name for our future land use, some categories as our zoning categories, which was very confusing for not only staff and public, um, developers as well. So we have, um, proposed some changes. There's the same, as, as written right now, the same land use category, future land use categories. Um, but instead of our urban high intensity, we have a urban activity, future land use. Instead of urban medium intensity, we have a mixed transitional, transitional land use. Instead of, uh, urban low intensity, we have a neighborhood light, uh, land use. The conservation subdivision land use is a new, um, so it's a new name, but it's a new category as well. Um, and then we have the, a neighborhood commercial, which really is borrowed from past plan, but it's the lightest use, commercial use. So that's compatible with, uh, neighborhood, uh, our neighborhood light residential use. You think of it as the corner store or, um, a commercial use that has limited externalities and will affect, uh, neighborhood residential property at least. Our middle, uh, commercial use is that service commercial. Think of, uh, maybe a medium, um, traffic, uh, corridor, not our highest traffic corridor, but something medium, which we have in a lot of corners in town. Um, some, so strip mall development. Um, we have, uh, restaurants, uh, think of like Eighteenth Street. We have, that's a good example. Um, some neighborhoods, so that's like our service commercial. And then community commercial, which is our highest intensity commercial. Um, you can think Betplex is an example of that. Uh, we have Middle Road and Devil's Glen, a very good example, where it's really drawing in, um, not just a neighborhood or a local services, but people are making trips there from all across the city and outside the city, or even the state. Um, industrial stays the same, business park, um, and some of the others are identical to it, the last plan, name and function. Um, so that, and that's, this is what we're, is proposed right now and kind of soak that in, I guess. Any questions?
Yeah, and maybe before the questions, I, I think getting away from UHI, UMI and ULI, all the which started with the word urban. And I don't, well, there are parts of Bettendorf that are urban. Most of Bettendorf is not considered urban. It doesn't feel urban. And so when you're having all these land uses on the map that started with the word urban, I had to educate people every time I talked to them, like, oh, this is gonna be urban. I said, hold on. So I think Taylor and the team have done a really good job in, in, you know, making the land use categories say their name. You know, makes transitional. That doesn't sound urban. That sounds like transitional use. To me, they're, they're saying their name now. Um, and so I really like that, that we've tried to make those categories be really, as much plain language as planners can do. And it's really hard for us to have plain language, um, because we're planners, perhaps. And then the other thing is just map accuracy. Um, this map is a legal document for the city, and it needs to be super accurate. And I can't tell you how many hours, uh, and painstaking time RDG and Taylor, Greg and I, uh, have spent trying to make sure the map is as accurate as possible. We had a case recently where there was a mistake on the map. It was regarding a private ball diamond complex, and it caused us a lot of consternation. So we're trying to make sure that never happens again. So this future land use map is as accurate as, as we think we can make it, um, with, with existing development and for our intents, intentions for the future.
Any questions or comments on the map from council at this point? Okay, thank you.
And.
Well, hold on. We got new council behind you. You can't see him because you don't have eyes in the back of your head, which is okay. It's okay. Greg.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I'm coming into this late, so you've probably already discussed it. I saw on the map a new category, conservation. Could you tell me a little bit about what that is? Conservation?
Sure. Um, so the conservation subdivision, um, it's a land use and/or it's a land use category, uh, you found in other cities. Um, it really is focusing on preserving as much, um, like high topography, floodplain, um, ex, limit the excavation needed for development. Um, how that translates, translates into a zoning use. We've, are still going, undergoing the, um, zoning ordinance update, but it could factor in of preserving, say, fifty percent of that land and then getting performance for maybe higher density, um, calculations for the land that you have, based on a different types of, of scales. So instead of flattening the whole area, um, as engineering feasibly as possible, um, it kind of incentivizes development to really preserve some of these areas that are very steep ravines, um, highly erodible, um, slopes, um, which also helps the city from stormwater perspective, um, preserves also the natural green space, trees, espes- uh, especially so, kind of overall.
Would some of those areas then be susceptible to, you said, greater density? Uh, would, would there be zoning categories that would promote greater density in those adjacent to the conservation areas? So let, let me, let me, let me.
Yeah, I think, I think I know what you're asking, yeah.
Yeah. In the time between my city employment, I represented developers who were trying to cite residential subdivisions. And people who lived in an eight hundred thousand dollar house didn't want six hundred thousand dollar houses across the street from them. People who lived in six hundred thousand dollar houses didn't want four hundred thousand dollar houses. And just as you were alluding to earlier, we had one where there were some fairly large houses on one side of the street and townhomes proposed on the other that the neighbors were objecting to. You guys have done a lot of work, and I'm not gonna try and second guess any of it, and I'm not gonna support whatever you guys come up with. But is there a way of piggybacking the desire to conserve certain portions with greater density that would then also allow for, uh, perhaps more affordable housing?
Okay.
For instance, if you're gonna preserve a ravine and you're going to allow more density, could you couple that with reduction of front yard setbacks or increasing duplexes in the zone? Or maybe even changing some of the design parameters of city streets? So that rather than having, when I was here before, it was a thirty-one foot, two lane with parking, maybe you'd agree that you would cut the street size down, make one lane for parking, maybe even make it a one-way street if you figure the thing out, as a way of cutting the developer costs, which then translates into more affordable housing, maybe even coupling that with tax abatement as a way of doing it. And I, I raise all this, Your Honor, and I appreciate your patience. I won't say anything more this evening. I just wanted to know if that's something that had been considered or could be considered as a way of promoting one of the city's goals, which is preserving and conserving areas of the city with another of the city's goals, which is promoting the ability for our kids to be able to afford a house in Bettendorf. And there may be a way of, of putting the two of those together.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Your Honor, I was, uh, gonna ask for permission to form a special committee on the conservation subdivision zoning ordinance. And I would now ask that Mr. Jagger be a part of that. He's made my point for me, uh, and, uh, while, there's a lot of agreement, um, in general, of what he said, putting that into law, as he would know, and putting it into a zoning ordinance and creating those performance factors is yet, work to yet to be done. We're really excited about it as staff. We have, uh, we have some parts on our northern area of town that, that are not ripe for development because of the topography. Um, but we can design with nature, if you will, to use an older term. We can design with nature and bring developers that want to do that and maybe cut some of their costs and save some land, save some of our precious green space and habitat and environmental quality, and build some really cool subdivisions that, uh, might look a little different. But, um, you know, they might have some top dollar houses. They may have some houses in the mid-range, too. We don't necessarily know that piece yet, but I think it could be a really, um, really good play for Bettendorf and keep some of the look that we all think about when we think about how Bettendorf has these, these nice greenways and has these, these, um, these natural areas that kind of run through our town. This would keep that theme alive, in my opinion. Uh, how, the performance of it is gonna have to be brought up through the zoning orders, through the law. This is conceptual at this point. I appreciate, uh, Mr. Jagger's comments very much.
Anybody else have some comments based on that or some thoughts? Okay. Okay, Jerry.
I do have a question. Thank you, Your Honor. Is most of that conservation subdivision property privately owned? Or is some of it publicly owned?
I, I would say it's all privately owned. There may be a smidgen or two that's city property or, but I would say, if I had to bet you lunch, it's all privately owned at this point.
Most city property, if we, unless we have it designated as a future facility or, which is rare, um, is gonna be mostly greenways or there's not gonna be structures necessarily on it. So these are areas that have those characteristics of that topography, high slope, um, floodplain, too, that could, could be developed, but they really have to be, have a higher consideration for the environmental factors on the site.
Can you talk about, uh, some of the parks that you've shown on your?
Sure. Oh, yeah, and s- uh, Mark touched on getting this map as accurate as possible for the developed areas of the city. So, um, you'll notice a lot more blue on the map. Well, blue, let's say, south of Tanglefoot. Those are areas, those are parcels or developments, schools, churches, uh, public works. Those are, we don't envision those changing by two thousand and forty-five. There's, there's still gonna be schools, churches, et cetera. So that's how they're shown as civic and public on the map. Um, the same goes with our parks, um, that are currently, um, being used and operated by the city. But to focus on the future, we need to, when growing, we need to balance our total park space with our, that fifty-seven thousand population number. So there are some parks shown. Notice, uh, north of I-80 and even eastern or crizzle areas, that dark green color. Um, there are parks shown on the map. Now, that doesn't designate, remember this land use map, future land use map is a bit fuzzy. It's more of a reminder to balance, you have to keep in mind when approving these developments that, hey, we're approving all these developments for residential, we have to keep in mind that those, we need park space to reserve. And this map is, any developer or applicant or the council at any time can, uh, uh, propose an amendment to this map. So it's a live map. This is just setting a bookmark for the future so we can have that, um, note that, to balance that.
So especially north of eighty, the park space that you see north of eighty, we're not citing parks in this map. This is not an appropriate planning step to do that. That's happening elsewhere. Uh, but we are saying you need parks, and we're gonna show you some in the map so that our map data is correct. So the amount of park space that we're planned out meets the, the, the amount of people we hope to have living in this city. Um, and then my other quick comment is you should always, when you look at a future land use map, I, I believe this works, you look at it, you should, if you squint a little bit, you kind of get a general color of the tones that are there, how much commercial, how much, uh, residential. And if you look from eighty north, we're really building on that commercial theme that's already happened at TBK. You have a, a new big commercial node that we're envisioning through this planning process, continuing up to the north and kind of surrounding that with some, some residential, maybe some conservation subdivision. So the new part of your city is gonna keep that commercial theme, like they're kind of becoming a commercial city, where people come to us for special commercial attractions, especially sports tourism. Um, and that seems to be a growing industry for us. And then we're gonna surround it with neighborhoods and parks and some conservation subdivision. And then we put, because she asked us to, we put a little bit more industrial on the map out on the west side. And we think that's important, especially more importantly now, given what the state's doing with rollbacks on residential. We might want a little more industrial, um, perhaps, or commercial. We'd have, we have a really good balance, in our opinion, um, if you go from Forest Grove north between commercial, industrial and residential.
Your Honor, just a question from Mark. Um, in light of some of the experience that we had with the map being, um, maybe inaccurate, the fact that we put some concept sites, would it, would it be valuable? And maybe that's a question more for Chris, but, um, if somebody looks at this map and says, hey, my property's now a park space, but nobody's talked to me about that, and nobody's, and I'm not entertaining offers about that, would that be better off to put some language or some shading to say that's a conceptual park space versus? I mean, you have the green space where Hidden Hills is, that's, we know that's a, a green space today by virtue of it being a private golf course. But those other park designations, if I'm the owner of that property and I see this map, am I gonna get freaked out and say, wait a minute, I, I wasn't selling my property. I'm not giving my property via park spaces. What's?
Sure. Um, to kind of respond to that, one component that will be part of the plan, probably the appendix of the plan, is really this map broken up into, I think we're doing like twelve smaller maps. And this was conducted in previous plans back from Bettendorf back to the fifties, really. And it shows why, where, how this map changed from the currently adopted map and the comprehensive plan to now, just using simple, um, numeric, uh, labeling and citing things like this is a conceptual park space for really, you know, thinking about preserving a park space in the future. It's not cited. But in other areas, we really can point out, this is perceived, this is, I think this is gonna be commercial. We want this to remain commercial. So I think that will, um, reiterate the point of cha- it'll help give context to the map. It's not just a map, and you can't make up your own context, which we've had issues with in the past, because you can argue over the color. See, you turn blue, but, um, that'll help, I think, solve, um, some of those issues. And they can point to, why was this changed to a park on, in the new update? And then go point that out. And then we, staff and or developer at the time, when they're proposing amendment, they can point to that and say, this was, you know, just a concept, and we feel that's actually a better use, is residential or commercial.
We can also, well, that's, that's a really good important tool to have context to the maps. This was our thought process, year one, year two, year three, year four, your currently found map change. That ki- we didn't have that context with, with the mistake we were talking about before. It was just showed up. So we'll have this context that we can go back to. But I think to Mr. Plain's point, perhaps we also talk to RDG about some type of language and say, hey, you know, future park space are shown. Um, and that is certainly very, uh, uh, conceptual and, and just kind of get that out front so you don't have to deep dive into the, you know, the back of the plan to, to have that discussion. I think we can do that, sir.
Other thoughts, Lisa?
Mine is with the park. Okay, and that's, I'm probably gonna be way off on this, but back to the conservation area. Okay, I think that came up because of our mess before with the trees. Run that into town, which we don't even need to touch that. Um, and then Greg had brought up the multifamily, which we really need that in Bettendorf, but, um, legally, I guess I'm worried. How do, how do I wanna word this? I'm hearing multifamily and conservation. Um, how do I wanna word this? I don't know. Now that we've heard that discussion together, what if a developer comes in and says, oh gee, I've got multifamily, and it could go in that conservation area and just these portions? Are we gonna be stuck legally with us not being able to say, oh gee, we can't turn that away? When I think that conservation area came up, kind of to initially avoid that kind of situation we had? Does that make sense? I mean, does any of this lock that in?
No, I think it, I think, doesn't it give it more credence that a developer has a better opportunity to develop it? Because he's gonna get credit for that space to assist in making that development occur more likely in, in a multifamily setting. Um, that's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, and it goes to the point that Mr. Jagger brought up and that Mark and Taylor have, have discussed. There are certain, this is the future land use map, and number one, it can, can always be amended, as we have done. But it's, I think the idea with the conservation, uh, subdivisions is just that it cannot be easily, um, or economically developed. And so if there is development that can go nearby, um, that you might be able to get some credit for density, which might, which might make certain more dense projects more attractive, you would be able to do something more dense. But there would also be a lot of ground around it that would not be developed, so it would feel m- more open, perhaps.
Yeah.
So that's part of the zoning ordinance that we will have to really dive into that.
Yeah, we have to zone it. We're, we're conceiving of the land use right now in our heads. We're so, still, we're at, we're doing that together right now. It's happening, right? It's kind of interesting. And then we have to zone it. We have to create a law that represents.
So I guess I was trying to organize my thoughts, trying to figure out, as long as we've got the flexibility to kind of say, okay, hey, we, we think we wanna go this route without being locked into.
I think that's the exact conversation that, that Mark and Taylor wanted to have is to, to understand that the future land use map is, it is a legal document, but it can be amended. But it gives a, a concept of where the city wants, sees this property developing. And, but it's not zoned, this is not a zoning document.
So we've got some flexibility. Okay, does that make sense?
It does.
Listen to the table.
Well, it's Jerry.
One more question. Thank you, Your Honor. Have we looked at Davenport's comprehensive plan and north of I-80, where do they show their, conservat-, or their, uh, development reserve area?
Actually, if I can.
And, and, and I bring up the question because I've suggested our development.
We're coming, we're, we're coming.
You're coming to that, okay.
We're coming.
We're going to, we're going to.
We, we're ahead of you, Jerry.
Okay.
Do you need clarification on that and under the, um, uh, under the annexation portion of tonight's agenda, sir? I think we'll provide a really good clarity on that.
But we have, and developed areas are, are, I'll say, south of eighty. We've definitely, um, looked at our neighbors, um, and the county, uh, to see that our compatibility, um, you know, we didn't take our, we didn't look at ourselves in a bubble, um, to make sure. Really Forest Grove Drive, uh, we have the Forest Grove, um, development, the obviously subdivision. But just the west there, you know, those are always, that's what we have to do, is look to our neighbors to make sure that, you know, they're aligning. Street alignments, all those different things, sewer. Um, and then to the east is, we'll kind of touch on a little later, but, uh, is undeveloped portions of the county, but also developed portions. So those are definitely taken into account for looking at this future plan as well. Be good on the future land use?
Move it on.
All right.
Thanks, gentlemen.
So you might be more asking, where is the document, um, as mentioned? Where staff is, uh, draft ed-, draft editing is being conducted by RDG and our comp dev staff as we speak. Lisa's back at the office editing right now. We have a community open house on the twentieth from six to eight PM at the waterfront convention center. This will be the first full draft of the plan, it won't be the final draft. So it's, everyone will be able to read it, we can still make edits, comments, input. It's the first time you'll see the whole text in its entirety, not just the map or certain sections. And after we make all those amendments and council feels comfortable, then we can begin the adoption phase, uh, which require go through P and Z and then council, it's an ordinance, so we have to go through those steps. Um, but that's where you, where we are now.
And when you hand that out at the open house, will these guys have a copy of it?
Yep, we will have a same copies, digital and paper. Our copy.
And so the timing of the open house, that's also a committee the whole night, committee the whole night. So, uh, it's from six to eight. Certainly council members don't have to attend. A couple have called and said, do you have to attend? No, the answer is no, you don't have to attend. You're certainly welcome to attend, we'd love to see you there. But it's, um, you know, it's not required, it's not a, it's not an official meeting of council, it's an open house for the public. So you're going to get a lot of the same information tonight that you, you would get if you came there. But you're welcome to attend, but it's certainly not a requirement, uh, of, of, you know, kind of the planning function or the process here.
And rather than half day old pizza, we're going to have week old pizza, if you guys want to show for that. Depends on what you finish this evening.
Okay.
Annexation, move it on.
All right. Uh, second item on our, uh, agenda within the agenda. Take a look at the annexation map. Um, I'll go over the adopted one, which is our current plan. Uh, and look over, uh, some, our proposed draft, which is in the current draft of the comp plan. And we've received some input, so we'll propose changes. This is, before we use the currently adopted map, this shows our annexation area going north of Territorial Road, west to Utica Ridge Road, and shows, uh, no areas east of our current city boundary. Um, this was adopted in twenty seventeen as part of the comprehensive plan. Um, to my knowledge, I think it hasn't changed in some time, so this has been a static map. And our current city boundaries are at, uh, Mount Joy Avenue, two hundred tenth street to the north. Currently in the draft comp plan, and this has been shown throughout the summer, it's part of the kind of alliance of the future land use map. This is our proposed annexation map. Uh, areas north of I-80 remain unchanged. Uh, area east of Chriswell Street has been added, so this basically aligns west of Wells Ferry Road. I will note, there are some developed areas, some neighborhoods east of Chriswell. Uh, we're not showing those areas as an annexation map. If the time comes and they want to voluntary, uh, request for an annexation, they're more than welcome to, if we have contiguous area. But we're showing really undeveloped, uh, farmland and some of the green area east of Chriswell. Staff has received input from council members on the draft annexation map. Um, Jerry just alluded to that. And in addition to the map, a request was putting more area west of Utica Ridge Road. This area mostly aligns the Spencer Creek watershed. All other areas shown in the draft, uh, two thousand, the twenty-three, um, comp plan version remain the same. So just the area highlighted in yellow were added, uh, as a proposed alternative to the annexation map. Staff will note a couple, uh, points on this addition. Staff contends the area contemplated would not be developed prior to twenty forty-five. Uh, we have shown the future land use map, that's the area that, given projections and a lot of other data, that's what we expect land consumption to be in twenty forty-five with fifty-seven thousand people. Uh, only certain portions of the area can be seored by planned extensions, current planning extensions. Um, if adopted, this, if this map were adopted as shown, uh, the annexation area would be shown as a development reserve on the future land use map. Given all those stated, staff is still recommending the current draft plan, but we are open for input discussion.
Just for clarification, the current draft plan goes to Utica Ridge.
Correct.
And then you've added this and you're looking for validation from the strategic planning where you heard that this is what we wanted, you want it validated, but not voted on because we're just having a discussion. Okay. And, and again, not recommending it, Your Honor, the addition. But we heard you loud and clear that several of you felt we should put that area in there. So how do you anticipate, and certainly you're going to get maybe some input here tonight, but, um, making that decision, this will be part of the discussion next Monday, at least the open house will provide information. And then at some point, when this comes back to us, you're going to have to, need to know which map to use, I believe. But we can't tell you that tonight, except you'll get input that might give you the flavor.
Right, yep. I think, you know, the discussion here tonight is going to probably be pretty helpful for us as staff. Uh, it's my understanding that I think the majority of council, if I were to just do a quick survey from my, uh, conversations, would, would like this better than, uh, the current draft. So the proposed alternative, I think, is, is probably more popular, just on my own, uh, just talked with council members. And, and we get that, we're fine with that as staff, that's not staff's recommendation. We also understand there's other considerations at play here. Uh, and I think another slide that Taylor's going to show you, um, might, might be interesting and help you make your decision, maybe works against our recommendation. But we don't think, we think you should plan for areas that you're going to be developed within your time horizon. And we don't think that's realistic here. Now, I'm wrong a lot, and so maybe I'm wrong on this one, but, um, we think that a realistic time horizon includes that area, uh, east of Utica, uh, up to Territorial and, and Chriswell. In fact, we'll show you evidence of projects that are coming forward in those areas. And so we think you need to plan for those, obviously, because they're, they're on your time horizon.
Summer right on the doorstep.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. This one probably not. This is a little bit, um, no man's land, not super developable. Got some issues, just topography and sewerability. Um, so that's the case we're making, uh, but we're not the deciders, we understand that.
Recognizing it was before your time, we had, we're back with you and helping us do this again, much before we would plan to do so because we took a, suggested by our consultants, uh, population increase that was way off. So if we continue to be at the trajectory we see, they didn't expect us to outlive by twenty forty-five the current status of the city. You're going to give us projects that are outside it today, within the next month. We didn't rely on the right set of facts and we all said, we're not relying on the right set of facts. But it's just planning, so it's not that big a deal. And you weren't here, so I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, remember, we were off that time. Craig and then Lisa, then we'll just go right through.
I don't, I don't remember when we came to a consensus that this was a good idea. Because I don't think it's a good idea. So. Yeah. And I respect that other people think it's a good idea. That's, that's fine, I just, I just don't know.
I don't know that we did, we talked about it at the, um.
But it was mentioned that this was a consensus of the city council, I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, let me, let me just clarify that. I, I feel like my, in, in individual conversations I've had with council members on this topic, I would, I feel like the majority are probably thinking, let's go a little farther west than I was proposing. That's okay, I, I get paid the same, so, you know, fine with me. Uh, there's no been, there's been no official consensus of council, that is true.
Chris, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I just wanted to also make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of what dis-, dis-, you know, I guess decision is sort of in play. I mean, what is the future annexation area? We aren't talking about annexations, this is just,
Absolutely.
when, when you go to the city development board to get approval of an annexation, they ask whether it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. And so if we had an annexation and then we wanted to go into that area added section, presently, we would not be able to say that is, that is consistent. We can always change the comp plan, we can do various things, but this is not, and i- it's not an, an issue of an annexation. I mean, when we look at the annexation strategy in the comp plan right now, it talks about things like go where, um, it, it favors voluntary annexation. Involuntary annexation is not favored. Talks about letting the market determine where annexation goes. Um, certainly, um, infrastructure issues, we all know that development follows sewer or infrastructure. So I, I, I think adding the, this, the area to the east of Chriswell was not in the, in the previous comp plan. And so this is already increasing the future annexation area because we have determined that perhaps going east makes more sense because there might be development that could readily go there and there might be some alternatives for infrastructure that we didn't previously see. So it fits more with the future and the near future. And going north, that's always, you know, that's been in the, the future annexation area for a long time. And the city boundary is already north of eighty. So the question here is just, does it go a little to the, to the west as a down the road area that we can annex without being out of line with the comp plan? So I, I just, I guess I just want to say it's, it's not like we are going there. It's, it just gives us the opportunity to tell the city development board that an annexation is consistent with our comp plan. So I, I just, I just want to be clear that we're all talking about the same decision.
To Mark's point, it could be added later.
But I'm curious, so, you know, we, we keep saying we don't want Davenport getting north of us, which is very important. But now we're moving north of Davenport. I mean, what is their plan? Are we stepping on?
So, yeah.
Okay, so. Go ahead.
That might be, might be helpful.
Um, other cities have comp plans too and annexation maps. Little, uh, some phone calls and looking up their comp plans, uh, was able to get the following. Eldridge is shown in green, Davenport in red, and then of course Bettendorf in blue. Davenport, Eldridge has an adopted, uh, annexation map dated twenty fifteen. Shows west of Spencer Creek and then just to their southern boundary. Davenport has shown this area, it's an older plan, but it's from two thousand two. Um, and actually goes farther east than our, uh, boundary to the west, if that makes sense. Um, so we have a lot of overlap here. Um, they're just annexation maps, so there, no annexation has occurred out here. I think we were actually the last one. We did have an annexation in twenty thirteen for some property on our far northwest, uh, boundary. It's farmland, I believe the Keel property. Hasn't been developed, um, really was, part of it was annexed from Davenport and the rest from Scott County. It's a voluntary annexation, a decision of the landowner. But since then, I don't think there's been much action on this front from staff's, um, recollection.
And Davenport's map, although it does come over the top of us, it's been that way for twenty years. And so we didn't, we didn't push to the west with a proposed annexation area, not an annexation actually, but an annexation area. When we looked at this last time, and I think staff feels the same way. That Utica Ridge corridor makes a lot of sense as a kind of a natural transportation, uh, barrier, if you will. But, you know, you might look at this map and go, well, if they're all planning to come to the east, maybe we should plan to come to the west and we can work it out when the time comes. Probably not in my lifetime, but maybe. I can see that argument too.
Lisa.
Okay, a couple of things. And then Jerry, I'm going to ask you some questions here in a minute. We've constantly talked about keeping the boundaries as far as the roads and that type of thing. And Chris, that was excellent, you brought that stuff up because the infrastructure that's in the roads, the sewer and all that is just a no brainer. Um, we've already got the mess, you know, that's from a long time ago, as far as around seventy-four and the golf course. And then you've got, that created the whole mess with the school districts as far as, you know, we've got people going to Bettendorf schools, they're paying Davenport taxes, all of that. So it's just confusing for everybody, so I don't know why we'd even consider going west of Utica. So I'm sure it's any of your thought on that, Jerry, because I think pretty much the consensus is Utica. And then just going into the whole extra costs just seems nuts. We've got so much going anyway. And the way we're growing, going, growing and going out from this point, I don't see that going down, it's just happened in Bettendorf. So I don't even know why we'd touch that. And then that part that, um, Davenport has had on the east side of Utica, if they've had that for twenty years, you know, and done nothing, I just think we ought to get off our tushes and get that little part now and kind of move on that. You know, get the part we were talking about. So, so Jerry, I'm curious why, you know, you're kind of stuck on getting the part to the west of Utica. You know, and we've got those clear cut boundaries. Or can we ask that?
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you.
That, right now, the, the proposed alternative, it's just a line on the map. And to Chris's point, it, it, uh, gives us the opportunity, the flexibility at some future date, if the landowner at that point in time wants to annex his property into our city, we can answer the, the question, yes, it's on the map. When you look at, like you say, Davenport has come east of seventy-four, twenty, twenty, thirty years ago, whenever. As far as I'm concerned, the council at that time, uh, Bettendorf council was asleep at the wheel. Look at all of the tax base, the commercial tax base that we have along that Utica Ridge corridor that's in Davenport, that we and Bettendorf lost out on that commercial tax base. Going north, you, I anticipate there's the potential, it's not a, not a done deal or for sure thing, but there's the potential that going north on Utica Ridge, uh, there will be more commercial or, uh, multifamily residential. Well, everything that's on the west side, if we leave that to Davenport, everything that on, is on the west side becomes their tax base, not our tax base. We have no cost by putting this line on the map. We, we incur zero cost. The cost does not come until the property is actually annexed. And that, uh, could be ten, twenty, thirty years in the future, it could be never. But the cost does not get incurred until, uh, a landowner wants to be annexed in and then everything's negotiable. and then everything's negotiable. You know, what does a developer, what do we require him to, uh, pay for, for, uh, infrastructure, and what do we pay for? You know, we've had that same situation at, at TBK and the R and T out there. You know, the developer paid for some of the infrastructure, we paid for some of the infrastructure, but for the infrastructure we paid for, we made the decision that it was to our advantage to pay for it. And at some future time, that could be to our advantage, and if it's not, we just don't annex it. But we leave the flexibility for some future council. A point I want to make too is there's some of that property up there. In fact, right now, we show on our, the previous map you were showing, you show, uh, east of Utica Ridge in that property that is not currently in the city, you show it as potential industrial. Well, if we get an industrial user up there, uh, that's a great tax base. Right now, Bettendorf, we are relying almost exclusively on residential to pay the taxes, we have no, we have no, uh, industrial tax base left. In fact, you know, one of the industrial sites we just had just burned down two weeks ago. And, and that will probably not be rebuilt. We need some industrial tax base. So this gives us the potential, and again, we incur no cost by moving that line at this point in time. But it gives us the flexibility. The natural drainage up there drains all the sewer into Bettendorf anyhow. So if Davenport annexes it, they're gonna dump the sewer into Bettendorf sewers, or they've got to go to the expense of putting in a lift station, which I don't know if they would do that or not. Probably, they would want to come in to dump their sewer into Bettendorf sewers. Just because that's the natural drainage. So again, that's one more reason why it makes sense to include it in Davenport. I mean, in Bettendorf, not in Davenport. You know, and we're not taking all of the, all of the county space up there, we're only taking a portion of it. We're still leaving a portion of it for Davenport, we're still leaving a portion of it for Eldridge.
Okay, I was just asking those first regidends, because we've got that mess by 74 and the golf course.
Scott, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just seeing this for the first time, I appreciate the diligence that staff's done to, to try to not only anticipate the questions, but to try to help us to figure this out as we go, it, it looks like we found a piece of pie that everybody wants.
Maybe.
And, you know, it's an interesting chess game, because I don't hate, my, my initial reaction was, I don't hate this semi-aggressive mood of like, oh yeah? We kind of see that as maybe we have an interest in there too, but like you said, we're talking about how many, certainly our lifetimes, if not those that follow us before we would even have an issue fundamentally where this thing would actually happen, so. Jerry's point about, hey, what is the prudent thing to do from a council standpoint to protect our citizens and our future interests? But we have no idea what they are. So clearly, the Utica line plus how much more, I was fascinated to see that Eldridge had adopted theirs in 2015, so really interested in what they've got in mind and kind of how they see that develop, and appreciate the extra time that maybe granted, so we can kind of look at the whys and what for's within this thing, but candidly, I didn't hate it when you showed the map without the other colors on there, I was like, why not? Maybe, but I'm not, you know, certainly as committed as Jerry is to that. It's gotta be, but I don't hate it. So appreciate the time and the homework that we have in front of us.
I think we've tried to provide you a really conservative buildable annexation map, annexation area that is, that is not going to be costly to the taxpayer, not going to, to get us into trouble where we're fighting off more than we can chew, to use maybe a tired phrase. And so we've, we've tried to be pretty conservative in our approach of, of using land, land is a certain resource.
Right.
Never be, they'll never be more of a created, and so, and I think you've used that argument that I just made both ways, but, but we're saying, here's the land that we think we need to be using, and we're gonna prioritize that, and, and if we're gonna annex, this is, this is the places we need to be looking next. Again, at the end of the day, I get paid the same. Personally, I, I could, I could probably argue both sides of the point if you wanted me to. My recommendation, as a director with some experience in doing this, is, is that that Utica Ridge line is the line we should hold up north of territorial, and then adding on to that Criswell side. It's work driven, that's.
I think what will help us too is, is to understand, if we do that, then what does that mean to Eldridge, and what does that mean to Davenport? Because I, I do think that these things all, if this, then this, it's a little bit of chess, a little bit of checkers, but when we, when we talk about, these are our our community partners, these are people that we are, they're not going anywhere, we're not going anywhere, so how we do what we do may be as important as what we do. And we're supposed to be able to hopefully collaborate and communicate, and then figure out, what's in the best interest of those folks up there, what makes the most sense? And we figure out what's sensible, then it, it ought to be replicated here and represented on the paper, because it just is, becomes clear, and if they feel strongly that we want to come over, well, we have a responsibility to kind of push back and say, well, wait a minute. But I'd love to find out through some communication and collaboration, perhaps even with, with your, uh, partners in Davenport, in Eldridge, and what can, what do we know for sure that we can agree on? And maybe there's not that much here that we really are fighting over. There's maybe more agreement than there is disagreement, but it's certainly not replicated on this map with all the colors, like, that's mine, you know, I want it.
I think it's more conceptual in the future though, right? Because there aren't plans for this area now by anyone.
Exactly.
And to Scott's point here, to Scott's point, at least by including it in our map, we hopefully bring them to the table. We still may end up agreeing at some future time, the council says, uh, yep, it's in the best interest of the community for it to go to Davenport, or the best interest of the community to go to Eldridge.
I do.
But at least that, that inspires everybody to come to the table.
I do have a question that.
By putting it in our plan.
Piggybacks on what Jerry said about the, in, in industrial component and so forth. I think that would help us as we get into the year to understand, like, sometimes people and communities lose track of who they are and what they do best, and they try to be all things to all people. I mean, the, it, it could be a rhetorical question, like, maybe we're a bedroom community with a little bit of amenities and some great entertainment, a great place to live, but maybe we're not an industrial thing, maybe it's fine to let that go to a neighbor, and to, with respect to your tax base comment, clearly we've got to follow, you know, some math along the way, but maybe we're not, maybe we're just really, really good at being an amazing place to raise a family, to feel safe in your community, to get educated, and to sleep, but maybe we don't have factories and manufacturing, you know, in every possible spot, I don't know. Thank you, Your Honor.
Goodbye. We'll just keep going right down Frank, and then.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'm just finishing nine years on the council, and I think we've talked about annexation for the last nine years. And I don't really feel like we've made any progress or very little. And the one thing I'd like to point out is, and I do support the Utica Ridge Road as the, as the line area, but I think, I don't think Davenport really seriously wants to come to the table with us. Because I know Decker's been talking to him, but I haven't seen anything to show for it. I think it's, we're at the point to where we may need to make some decisions for Bettendorf, and start to proceed in that area. Because I think what Davenport is doing is, if you notice 56 along Utica Ridge Road, they just keep a little bit more commercial being bid off. And that should have been ours, personally. But it's not. So, that's my feeling on that, I'd also like to mention this Criswell and Wells Ferry area. Don't we have a problem sewer wise, the further to the south that you go on either Criswell or Wells Ferry for development?
We will be touching on that.
Oh, okay.
There's a reason Brent's here tonight. We've been thinking about you guys for a long time.
Nick, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I would say in general, I don't need to repeat much of what's going on, I only really have a couple of things, number one, I think, when we think about the, the land west of Utica, it, it could just inherently be a bargaining chip for us, right? We make our intentions known, and then again, whether they want to come to the table or not, at least they understand what our intentions are. So then it gives us a little bit more flexibility when we come to the table. I asked and answered on the typography for, uh, east of Criswell, we'll get to that. And then just out of, just from, from my understanding, as we look at the, uh, the blue area that we are interested in annexing, is there a one, two, three in progression of, that we'd want to do this? And that might be something that I'm, again, being newer to the council, I, I don't, I don't know how that process works.
As far as our annexation map goes, we don't have a tiered system, but we do it within our comp plan, and I, we've shared this with council, I think, earlier. It'll be in the comp plan, you'll see it Monday, but, uh, we have our, uh, growth tiers, which are, you know, where we expect near term, long term, and then just preserve, uh, growth, and we're showing that near term growth, um, right along the middle road, um, interchange, north of I-80, middle road interchange, and then all, also east of Criswell. This is from just comments from developers, uh, the trend of development in both those areas, we expect near term growth, almost imminent. Then more of a longer term growth, uh, kind of branching out north of that interchange area. We don't really see any long term growth east of Criswell, because there's development east of Wells Ferry Road and this old down by Valley Drive, so really that's in, kind of infill development per se. And then that development reserve, which is shown as our kind of north of our, a little farther north in our city boundary, uh, we just don't expect that to be in this time horizon of this plan, which is 2045, and that's just based on what our projected growth, the numbers are, uh, land consumption rates, et cetera. So that's how we kind of tiered the process. And that also was used, um, by a consultant, uh, Gruen and Gruen, to do that fiscal impact growth study, they use those tiers to kind of break down what, what are the impacts of revenue, uh, service costs, et cetera, on the general fund. Um, so that those align together to kind of see what kind of land uses, what kind of development, how it affects, um, fiscally the city. So yeah, there's, you can use this map, and then with their, their all alignment, well, we'd have to update the alignment if this was adopted, but just the boundaries of it, you can see where we expect the growth.
Got it, okay. Great, thank you.
Your Honor, I think we'd like to kind of move on and show a couple more slides and talk about some of this, uh, to use a not a real word, sewerability, which is a word we use all the time. And I think it's an answer to the question, especially along that Criswell, uh, growth area or annexation area, because that is an area, we were telling you before, hey, pretty expensive, tough topography, um, but we've got a whip smart engineer, and we think we got a way to solve this problem, and we've got some developers that are really interested, so we want to show you that.
So, we have a annexation scheduled, a public hearing for annexation scheduled next week. That is our Wells Ferry Road development, the Blunk property, just a refresher, this is the ground that would be, is proposed to be, um, annexed into the city. Eighty-six acres roughly north of Forest Grove and west of Wells Ferry Road. The proposed development, um, includes, um, some reorganizing of the lift stations in the city out there, be a reduction of, or cancelling out of two lift stations and the addition of one. That lift station not only would be able to serve that development, Sterling Woods and Spencer Hollow, but also would allow for servicing sewer all north of 80, shown in the yellow area. That's a proposed sewer map, so that's coming from our, Brett can speak to this a lot more. So that's all related just for that annexation, if that subsequent to approval, um, and that development, that's all occurring at the same time.
Let's go, let's go back, because that was quick, let's go back. Can you go back up to? So, yeah, right there, so, um, you know, this, this is the real world happening faster than the planning timeframe that we can do, right? So, we're, we're trying to plan for this, we're, we're telling you, we think we need to have annexation to, to the north and to the east, and lo and behold, here comes a project. Why we're doing planning, um, that is, that is exactly that, and so this has been on the docket for a while. Uh, we've been trying to digest it and kind of analyze it, uh, we've, we've talked a lot with the developer. So this is happening outside of the plan, if you will, the, the plan is not causing this, this is causing the plan perhaps. Um, and so, this is Forest Grove Schoolhouse, if you go.
I was gonna show the.
Yeah, there you go. So this conceptual area, just for Forest Grove Schoolhouse, which will not be moved or changed in any way, it's a historic site, it will be there, it's one of our oldest buildings in Bettendorf.
Where is it on this map?
It would be.
Should be right. Right there.
And then, um, this has been, um, conceptualized by a local developer who you're probably familiar with. Um, there's also some interest in Pleasant Valley School District, which is a, that is a public interest, they have made that interest public to locating a school out here maybe someday. Um, so, again, things are happening faster than we can plan for them, so this is helping drive the plan.
Yep, and as a reminder, that, uh, it's over 70 lots, a single family, um, some little wedge of land between the I-80 and the creek could be proposed for s- storage, and then, um, 16 acres that Pleasant Valley School District has, um, publicly, uh, put on contract.
And would we, would we own half of Wells Ferry at that point?
That's correct, uh, part of the annexation when, and Chris can, um, kind of add to this, but part of the annexation process, we are forced to go to the center line of the road, we don't have an option.
Sure.
So we can't opt out of maintaining it, so our new boundary would be, um, you go back to this, this map, would be the center line of Forest Grove going to Wells Ferry, and then center line of Wells Ferry, and then we'd just go to north of I-80 right away, that's where we'd end, and then come back to our current boundary.
So this will be on your docket, on Planning and Zoning's docket, and on your docket.
Sorry, been up.
Yeah, already been up, BC, um, in, in the next, in the coming weeks, before we can ratify this plan.
Taylor, let me add a few things to this as it relates to the Spencer Creek Lift Station, there's some really big benefits, um, to this property being brought into the conversation. So you'll remember the original Spencer Creek Lift Station planning started over 10 years ago, uh, it's gone through several consultants, several alignments, uh, several locations for where the lift station would go. Um, the intent was always that it was going to go in Forest Grove Park. It was city owned property, wouldn't have to go out and acquire anything. That had its benefits, but also had a lot of limitations. Uh, one was the terrain, getting a service road down to where that lift station needed to be was gonna be quite expensive to construct, difficult to maintain, um, definitely not ideal. Uh, it also limited, because you had to place that station further west, it limited how far east that we could eventually serve. You could always do some really deep sewer through there, but that was really going to be cost prohibitive. So, the, the stars kind of aligned, the, this project did come to us initially with staff right about the same time that the DOT came to me and said uh, that the new abutments for the future middle road interchange, the new bridge abutments, we're gonna wipe out the force main that we have under right now from that little lift station on the north side of 80. Um, so we started putting our heads together with, uh, McClure, who had done, you know, our full system study here, and conceptualized a location on the Blunk property. Taylor, can you go back to the concept, it's really probably the easiest way to see it?
This one?
Yep, so by placing the lift station, can you kind of highlight that clearing area between? There you go, right there, that's roughly where we are looking at putting the lift station now, we've, so we've moved it pretty significantly east. Um, several benefits, one, aside from getting down from Wells Ferry, that, uh, there's a little bit of slope coming off that, otherwise that area is really flat and will provide us a really nice location to, to build the lift station, be able to work down there. Two, as Taylor mentioned, it's gonna give us an alignment that will allow us to take um, the Sterling Woods Lift Station off, offline permanently, that we know is near the end of its life, doesn't meet current standards, doesn't have emergency generators. Um, also gonna allow us to take the Spencer Hollow one off. Um, obviously, that's a newer one, only a few years old, but these are maintenance headaches no matter what. Um, especially smaller ones built for 100 acre, 150 acre, that size area. So, several benefits to that, also now that the wind millers will be bringing this forward, um, we've worked out an agreement similar to what we do for, say FGAD, when, when we had to make sure they gave us all the right away, they're. they're going to give us easements for this, one less thing that we'll have to, to purchase. So, a lot of benefits to this location, so it really changed our, our thinking. But we are moving forward with it and do anticipate, hopefully, construction, uh, being underway this time next year.
Brent, maybe it's important for you to note, too, with this flat area down there by the creek, that access to this lift station, would it be off?
Yes, that's what I was saying, so it would come off Wells Ferry, we don't have to go through the park. Uh, it, it's a much cleaner route.
The mayor asked a good question, why wouldn't we do it through the RV station? Because the creek is there.
Yeah, you have the creek, and then you also have a draw coming from the north, that you can just kind of see that little jut out of green, and, and a little bit of a draw. There's a culvert crossing there, so we would actually have to cross two waterways with the piping. This keeps us out of it, and we don't have to cross the creek, except the one time, uh, where we'll actually go under the interstate.
And Brent, isn't there also a cost-sharing agreement, um, with windmillers, um, for some of this placement?
We have not gotten to that point, um, but what this will do will shorten their length of, of gravity sewer, but also keeps us from having to take another lift station if we didn't provide them an option, because by our code, if, if you don't have a gravity option, we're forced to take a lift station. So we would have actually been looking at adding another one in. So, right now, I don't believe there, that it'll be necessary. Uh, it's just going to, the easements will be basically the, the dollar value. And then, the next section that Taylor's going to go to, we'll go into a little more detail on the, uh, east of Criswell.
But, but show the lift station coverage area again, because I think that's important. Because we did not have that coverage area, if you remember, with the lift station.
All the way to, to Criswell, or, excuse me, to Wells Ferry, correct.
So you got sewer past Utica Ridge.
So that, that doesn't quite match up with what we're showing. But to your discussion about Utica Ridge or going further west, Spencer Creek, where it turns and heads north, will be the west limit of what we can sewer with gravity. We do not have the depth to get under the creek again. Uh, we're running our sewer at point zero, zero, eight percent, which is actually more than the, the minimums for that size pipe. It's incredibly flat, it's already incredibly deep. We do not have the ability to go any flatter, so we won't be, a- and our maps have always shown that. Where that creek turns and heads north is where we always showed stopping our gravity sewer. So it's another factor that will play into any future annexation in that area.
And, and how many acres is that?
So our initial service area is a couple thousand that we're planning. But we will build the station to be scalable, um, to get us all the way to the entire future annexation map with gravity. I can probably calculate.
And, Your Honor, for those of us, and I think I'm the only one of us, perhaps Lisa, we had a heck of a good time when Sterling Woods, which didn't have a sewer. It was such a wonderful time. This lift station will be of consequence and be able to expand and push into our existing sewer system, would you see the map? That runs into, would it be East Pigeon?
Yes, yep, so we will locate that station, we will force mains, we will pump up through the windmiller development, and then basically stay within the Forest Grove right of way and tie into a manhole that's, uh, just west of there.
And then flows by gravity to the, all the way to the plant?
All the way down, yep.
And the fewer lift stations you have, the better off you are. Gravity is our friend.
I wasn't around that, I was still in college.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, one more area to, um, talk about sewer again, the near growth, near-term growth area, that's east of Criswell. As shown on the annexation map, the undeveloped areas is really what we're talking about, um, to provide sewer for future development. A sewer, um, floor engineering did conduct a sewer study, um, I believe it, has been chaired with council. They revised that study to, the initial study incorporated pretty much the whole Pleasant Valley, unincorporated area. We had them revise that study to concentrate just the area, uh, west of Wells Ferry Road. Um, that area contains pretty much mostly undeveloped area. Fen Woods is, um, subdivision is there, but areas west and farther north, um, are undeveloped, currently farm, um, ag land. Uh, they divided the, the, the study, uh, identified four sewer basins, uh, they're delineated, so green, blue, yellow, and red. Green and the blue are the largest, uh, basins, and are mostly undeveloped. The yellow, smaller basin, it does contain some, um, mostly, uh, single-family residential, I believe. Um, and part of it is actually in, in the city of Bettendorf right now. And then the red area, all located south of US sixty-seven, um, contains some areas in, um, the city, but mostly not, and it's mostly consists of floodplain, um, really low areas with poor sewerability. Their recommendations, um, were to, um, sewer three of those basins, the green, yellow, and blue. The red area, as mentioned, south of sixty-seven, contains significant floodplain and low topography, which isn't really feasible for sewerability, require more lift stations. On this map, it's hard to see, but it's a very conceptual, uh, preliminary, um, sewer location, sewer trunk line location. So this would not require a lift station. And Brent can kind of speak more to.
Yep. So, several things to add to this one, too. A, a little bit of history, I don't think why we had initially said that we didn't think this was feasible. One was cost. The area we were looking at, as Taylor mentioned, uh, went east of Wells Ferry. At that point, you have a ridge at Wells Ferry, and it starts falling off to, that serving any of those homes east of Wells Ferry, capturing that area would require an additional lift station, which absolutely will add probably ten million to the cost right off the bat. The other thing that we, we had discussed was there was no real immediate projects, you know, and I think when the windmiller project came to us, and specifically included the school, so I'm, Mark, I'm, I'm playing planner now. But when the school came to us, the thought was, if you've got seventy-some lots in the windmiller addition, um, the school's going to need a lot more, and quite frankly, there's just not the ground out there. Uh, especially in that interim time when, uh, Lord's and St. John Vianney acquired some additional ground. You know, that eastern portion of the city was getting eaten up pretty quick. Uh, we decided we really needed to take a second look at this ground. Combine that with the county at the same time, also, uh, looking to change their minimum lot size if this was to stay county, um, due to some issues with septic that they're having in other areas, their minimum lot size increased to, I think, one point six acres? Taylor, does that sound?
Yeah, it hasn't been adopted yet, but they're.
They're looking to increase it, so the density was going to go way down if this ground stayed in the county. So, all those stars aligned, we took a look, um, and by narrowing it to everything just west of Wells Ferry, uh, you don't need the lift station, and we do have enough depth in our interceptor just west of Pleasant Valley Ready Mix, so we would have to cross Spencer, or, uh, Pigeon Creek there. Uh, but we do have enough, enough depth in that sewer to do this without a lift station. So that's why this really became something that, you know, from staff's end, that we wanted to take a good, hard look at. You're looking at about five hundred acres. I should say, the, the three, the blue, green, and yellow is a total of about eight hundred acres. If we could overlay some, if we overlaid what we're actually showing on the annexation map for there, which would be everything that's undeveloped, that's about five hundred acres that you're looking. So either way, it's about four thousand people that, that we're looking. And the initial estimate was about eleven and a half, twelve million dollars to do all that. But this was something that, you know, we've, we've never done before, um, that I think we're all envisioning we would potentially create some sewer districts here, maybe as a way to help pay back part of that project cost. It's SRF eligible, uh, also something we've never really used prior to Spencer Creek, so a lot of changes, but also a really good opportunity here, we think.
How close are we to the sewer hookup fee change that we've talked about?
Yeah, so I, uh, sent a memo today to, uh, Mr. Plain and some of my other colleagues just to, to review it again with the changes. I think I heard from council, um, I can have those in red line to you, uh, within a meeting or two of the city council, uh, but I wanted to, to kind of put the memo together that would show what those cost increases would be and what the revenue associated with them would likely be. So, literally, it could be on your desk, sir, if you will, in days.
I think the sooner the better if we've got people coming for new sewers and hookups.
Those fees are just our general normal fees. If it's sewer district, that would have its own fee structure, you need to that district, so it's separate process for that, sir.
And we talked a little bit about that, too, especially with the first sewer with the lift station, and who's going to pay for that.
And then, one other just clarification, for people that may have watched this at home or see this later, don't let these sewer maps confuse you with annexation or future land use maps, two different things.
Way different.
Just because something is in a sewer map doesn't mean it's part of our city annexation plan. You know, you've got to let the plan speak for itself. We have to show you all the engineering, and sometimes those geographies are, are a little bit different, if you will.
Understood. Anything on the sewer trunk lines here?
Again, this is reality pushing the, the planning process, so we have projects now in areas we're recommending for annexation.
But it's going to come quick, so we need to get organized on the front end. Go ahead, Taylor, what else you got for us?
That's it.
Okay, any questions? For Taylor? Yes, Greg? Well, I'll just come back down again, these guys got my attention first, I was even looking at you. So we're going to go this way again.
Where, where does the, um, plan for road net, where does that, the, the road nets, the? Proposed roads, what, what map would that show on?
So, we do have a, oh, that's going way back now. This map, for some reason, I don't have it on, I was an error on my part, but does have, the, the future land use map has a future transportation network on it. It's not shown on here, I, I'll provide you with a copy of that. But those aren't, those are more to communicate connectivity, how we want certain roads that are not connected, or they're dead adding, that we see that they should connect to certain corridors. They're by no means site planned or for location. Um, but that, that network, that's kind of how these shapes were developed. And those shapes of those different land uses were, of course, different land use, uh, acreages equal different densities of population, et cetera, and different demand for commercial, so that is on this map, this one. We'll be on this map, I'll share that with you. But that isn't a site, um, specific, it's more about, think of more connectivity. We need more, say, along our Middle Road corridor, we'd probably need some, um, some type of connectivity running parallel with that to provide access, um, because Middle Road will be very busy once we upgrade that.
I, I, my main, yeah, it does, but my, my main, what I think is very important to show is Devil's Glen Road getting across eighty, that we, that we make sure that we have the land available, and I think it should be put in there that we're going to have a bridge at some point, not, well, geez, maybe someday. We need to, I think we need to show, even if it's futuristic, that, that there's a, a way to get across eighty there. Otherwise, you've got Middle Road, Wells Ferry, and Utica.
North-south is our, north-south travel is, is our, is our limitation right now for getting over eighty. You're absolutely right.
I'd really like to. I'd like to have that shown, how much, how much, we own a four-lane Devil's Glen, how much land's going to be for the bridge and the landing, or whatever, that's, that's what you guys do.
And that, and, and that comment was received at one of our previous meetings, and shared that with RDG staff. And they, um, I believe they're kind of proposing a, instead of a, we have our, our network of transportation out here that are lines, but maybe show a different, maybe points of overpasses or connection points that are pretty priorities, and that would be one of them. Another good example would be down by, um, our railroad tracks, um, near our western border with Riverdale, certain areas that we just kind of prioritize is either overpasses or connection points, and show those on the map.
There, there are a few of those that staff have really, that, and Greg, I knew you were going to say this, and I'm sorry it's not on the map, because it's in our mind. Getting over Interstate eighty, uh, perhaps Devil's Glen Road is going to be shown. Depot Street Extended is going to be shown. Uh, I think there's maybe now more than ever, that is a possibility. And then the Twenty-third Street Overpass will be shown on the map. You know, that's the power we have as planners, is we can plant the seed, and then hopefully, the other jurisdictions follow and help us create those realities.
I just think it should be when instead of if.
Yes, sir.
Yep, so a couple of things to that, Greg, real quick, um, just slightly before my time, but, keep in mind that the Devil's Glen Bridge over Spencer Creek that was done in, I think it was just before I started in twenty fourteen.
Yes.
Is only a two-lane bridge.
Yes.
So that would have to be completely redone. You're probably looking at, you know, twenty million plus to get across the interstate, and you have the, um, restation there as well, DOT property. So, a lot of factors that would go into that, and the majority of that, I guess, never mind, that's more about development, and, but most of that ground on the south side of Spencer Creek, north side of eighty is, um, unsurable as well. But from a transportation perspective, that wouldn't come into play.
Lisa?
Good, no.
Anybody else? Other comments, thoughts?
Great work.
All right, thank you both very much, thank you staff and the department heads for your input, we appreciate it. Just a thought, as we get through to the next part, that discussion about density and setbacks and green space and height requirements and all of that that we haven't necessarily had, seems to be one of the bubbling topics for the reason for the work that you're doing, didn't see that in the presentation tonight. It's okay, just know that that's bubbling.
Yes, sir, and I think, um, we're going to be able to get this plan done, and really, we're working on that, we're working on that in the background with zoning ordinance.
When we go into the zoning portion of the discussion.
Full head, uh, right up the nail on the head, if you will, with the zoning ordinance. That's where that will be driven home.
True, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We stand adjourned, good work, people.
Norman said that the other night. Good work, people.